This meeting is being recorded.
All right, so shall we start with tennis? Brooke Jewell here. Carolyn Coffey here. Catherine Harvey's here. Elaine Breslow here. Mary Lou Lauren. Steve Brown.
Here.
And we're missing Megan Brinsey and Alex Buttery.
And Sarah Peace.
And Sarah Peace. All right, so maybe they'll join.
Sarah's not coming in.
Oh, Sarah's not?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't hear from anyone.
Maybe Megan was gonna try to...
Oh, Alex just told me he wasn't coming either.
Maybe it was in the van or something.
Yeah, she was gonna maybe dial in. Yeah, so maybe she'll join soon. All right, did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Any changes, comments?
Motion to approve them.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Megan.
Maggie?
Oh, yeah, that's one of Megan's children.
Okay.
Sorry.
You want me to change?
Yeah, a member of the public interested in what's going on.
Let's see her.
She doesn't have her camera on. That's okay. Thanks for coming. My report is fairly short this month. We have some, just our big project going on. So our closure looks a little bit like we're gonna be available for hold pickup, Tuesday the 26th through Friday the 29th from 10:00 to 4:00. And on Tuesday, the 2nd through Friday, the 5th from 10:00 to 4:00. And then we're reopening on Saturday. And then the holiday is in there. So we're closed on Sunday, Monday for Christmas and Sunday, Monday for New Year's. So we have been shifting and doing some prep work. We've actually got a lot more prep work done than I had anticipated. So that's fantastic. We're interfiling our collections and we're moving things along. And so we're gonna be in great shape for Tuesday when we move the rest of the collection off the shelves so that on Wednesday, facilities can come. We're giving facilities a good couple days just in case something happens as it usually does. Snack food.
Now, are they gonna dust all the books and clean them all up?
Yeah, well, we'll be moving them and cleaning them. And facilities is gonna come and flip the shelves. And they're gonna do a deep clean of the whole building. They're gonna paint the ceilings.
That's exciting.
Very exciting.
And the lighting is atrocious right now. That's gonna make a huge difference.
So we think that there's actually an electrical, like a bigger electrical problem going on with our lights in the main space. So it's not just gonna be a matter of flipping some light bulbs because we've done that. So we have electrician coming in during that time too to see. They have to lower the lights to work on them. So they're gonna have to create some staff holding, staff holding so they can lower the lights. And it's big, it's becoming a really big project. So it's perfect timing for us to be closed because we probably would've had to close just to have that done anyways. So that's getting done. We're trying, they're kind of, we might be doing some painting in the meeting room depending on kind of how the timelines up. But we're trying to cram as many maintenance and library maintenance things as possible into this amount of time. So we're very excited. It's gonna look great when it's done. Some sad news. Michael is leaving us. Actually, his last day is tomorrow. He accepted a position in Norwood, which is he can walk to from his house. And Norwood's a much bigger library, much larger staff, and he is taking on the same position. So it's actually an elevated position for him. And we all know that he was ready to do that. We probably had limited time with him. So we did have limited time with him and, but we're very happy for him. We have hosted the job. And we're just waiting to see what plays out from there.
Are they knocking down the doors?
No, no. Circ supervisor is a hard position to fill because it's not an easy job. Because you're kind of dealing with all the tough problems that come through with the public. And generally, it's not a lot more money than a circulation position. So it comes with a kind of a not equal amount of responsibility to the pay. So, and that's kind of true everywhere, but here as well. So it's a little bit difficult. But I think we have some opportunities too. We've been thinking amongst the staff where our holes might be. And, you know, if we need to kind of do a reorg after we have this posted for a little while. So we're starting to think creatively about, okay, if we don't get somebody for this position, how do we make it an opportunity? And so that's kind of what we're working on right now. Storywak is back on the common. And also, the common looks fantastic with all the life. I think it looks really nice. So it's nice to have the storywak there as well to showcase the library with all the other work that's being done there. And the last thing is, so capital budget plan. So capital budget requests were due December 1st. And I thought that I could submit something. And if we decide not to do it, great. But if we decide to do it, it's in process. So I did put in for possibly using some of the leftover endowment this year because we don't have to use it for materials to replace the children's room carpet, which we got quote for about $30,000 to do. So I did put it in. If we decide not to do it next year in FY '25, we don't have to. But I thought it'd be better to have it in there in case we do want to do it. Because otherwise, we would've lost it.
Why wouldn't we ask the town for the money first?
We could. I don't, we could. I think it's, capital budget is quite competitive. And I think that generally, the fire department and the police department win on those types of things. But we could try. I just, there's a lot of competition for capital budget funds.
There's no doubt about that. But if we're gonna get this done out here, we might wanna use that $30,000.
We'll see what shakes out. I mean, so it's due December 1st for next year. So it's kind of, you know, I'd have to plan a year and a half in advance. So I'd rather get it in now. And again, we decide to use the funds for something else, great. But I'd hate to miss the due date and then not be able to do anything. That's the only reason I do.
That makes sense.
Thanks, yeah. So, and then other projects, we're just working on hiring somebody for a circulation supervisor and creating a social media plan. That's, yeah, pretty simple. But we have a lot going on. Any questions?
It's just sad to see all the bookshelves empty.
I know, but they're gonna be so full soon. Don't worry.
I saw something about more paperbacks because?
So paperbacks is one of our highest circulating collections. And it takes up the smallest amount of space. So we're expanding our space for paperbacks because...
Is it because of what's in them? Is it the kind of paperbacks we're buying? Or is it because people prefer to handle paperbacks?
I think people prefer paperbacks. If they're traveling or they're going to the beach or something like that. It's a lighter, lighter thing.
Interesting. I think it's both. I think that, because it's, the mass market paperbacks are, you know, like...
Popular materials.
Things people like to fly through.
What's going on with the social media piece of it? You said you're figuring out social media.
We need a social media plan of just kind of, and it gives the staff some direction too. Because I think sometimes, like, they, well, and myself as well. We know we need to post, but it's like, but we don't know what to post, you know? Or like how frequently. So I think instead of them doing it, it's like shy away from it because it's so public. And if you do it wrong, there's a spotlight or whatever, you know? So I think if there's a plan in place that's gonna give everybody some confidence about like when they should be posting, what they should be posting, how to use hashtags.
Right.
All that type of stuff.
Who has like the ability to post here?
All the staff librarians.
Okay.
And myself. So I think everybody but the service staff.
Okay. Is it that to kind of run it by you or they can just do it? They can just...
No, I mean, I say to them, if you're gonna post something that you think might have any controversy, run it past me. Kind of same with programs. You know, run it past me if you could think of, you know, any controversy that might come from it. But other than that, yeah.
Yeah.
Just there's not, there's not much we could post about the library that would like really jar people. So I'd like to get everybody there.
Yeah. I wonder if there isn't an opportunity with the circ supervisor position to hire someone who has...
That's skill.
Hire, hire a marketing person who has managerial skills and may not be necessarily circulation related. Does it have to be a circulation? Is, do you need a, you know, like, is there an opportunity to maybe think about the job that way?
Mm-hmm. And we have, because we also have somebody in-house who's very talented at marketing, who hasn't been able to use the skills, I think, as to the highest ability that they have. So we've been thinking about the strengths of the staff that we currently have and how we can, you know, kind of boost our retention base and also reward skill sets that we haven't been able to do in the past as well. So, yes. And it's definitely a hole that we have is marketing.
So a lot of what I think, in addition to posting frequently and changing content, because if you don't, then people are just not gonna look anymore. You know, a lot of what, first of all, Instagram has backed away from stills and photographs to video. And so, you know, there's one person I follow, I don't know his name now. He's just this amazing library person. I'm sure you know him with the big hair. And he talks about, you know, a library child walked in and a library parent came with them. And he posts almost every day, just stories about, you know, what happened in the library. They don't have to be, you know, earth shattering, but they're just human stories. And, you know, he has a huge following now.
Yeah.
And just the whole issue of literacy and in Massachusetts, the whole, you know, we're not doing that well with reading. There's another gentleman online who, you know, is teaching himself how to read. He's an adult. And he's just charming and really tries. And he's making a place, not just for himself, but for others who would be so ashamed about not being able to read.
Right.
So, I don't know, there's probably human interest stories that could be, you know, playfully videoed and posted somehow.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and they can just be done right on self-ones too. And so that's one of the things, like, I think we're very good at posting our upcoming programs over and over and over again, which is, you know, something that we need to do. But we need to add the things like that.
Human interest stuff.
Yeah. But I need to create a plan so that people feel empowered to do that and they feel like they have direction. Because when I just say to them, like, post something that, you know, pulls on the heartstrings, it's just, it's scary.
And if they're comfortable lighting that up too. I mean, that's the other.
Yeah.
Not everyone would be comfortable. Perhaps they have the story in their head that they can so much express it and like...
Yeah.
That's, that's a real skill set.
Yeah. So we're gonna, we'll look at everybody empowered and feeling like they have some direction. And I think that'll help out a lot with this, instead of just posting kind of the same stuff that we do. So, New Year.
Is the website going well, the new websites? Do you feel like you're getting a lot of...
We feel like it's going well. You know, we haven't actually, I think we've gotten some good feedback. We haven't received any bad feedback, which is generally kind of the worst feedback you get unfortunately, just in the world. But, so, I haven't heard any comments of people not liking it. I think people find it, the search ability a little bit better. We are still working on, we're actually working, Corey Evans is helping us out a little bit with... We want to have the calendar streaming on the side. And there's some technology things that are a little above my head with coding. So he's helping us get that into place. And I think once we have that, we'll feel a little bit better about it. Because that was one of our number one things we wanted on there. And we just haven't been able to get it to act the way that we want it to.
Good hire with Jen Evans. You get it two for it.
I didn't know that connection.
No, I get it.
Thank you.
Yeah, any questions for Megan? Great, thank you, Megan. From...
I don't have a lot to talk about. It's pretty straightforward this month. I had to order another set of passes for the trustees of the reservation. I don't know why. We've had it for years, but all of a sudden, it seems to have become more popular. So it doesn't expire until the end of June. So we decided to just go ahead and get another set of passes. Your escapes by Renee is the, what's it called, an apron?
The pad.
Pad, something like that with a book bin. And the friends paid for half of it, and we're paying for the other half to have a stable place for the bin to be. And then we just have our newsletter charges. And that's about it for that. And then, I don't know if anybody saw, but our passport acceptance thing.
Yeah, that's amazing.
We actually have...
$437.
We have four more scheduled. Since I wrote this, we only had two, and then we had two more.
That's amazing. That many people are...
People are so happy. It's really incredible, like, it's been a lot of people with their children. And so it's just so much nicer to come here.
Yeah.
Go over to hang on post office and we were just talking...
So the word is out.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is it, is it, is it becoming a big time suck?
A little bit. We've got, I think it's six or seven of the staff members are trained now. And we just worked up a schedule so that each, we have teams of two. And they're each responsible for a different day of the week. So it's not falling on one person to do it all the time. Jen is actually super good at it. So sometimes she'll sit in with other people who don't feel as comfortable. But it's actually becoming a lot more than we thought it was going to be. So I don't know, we may have to...
Tweak our...
Tweak the...
Yeah, exactly.
That's another one.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's actually, it feels good. You know, the first ones we did was my neighbors. And they had booked a trip for Christmas and they didn't know they were gonna have passports in time. And then I saw them and they were like, Costa Rica is on, we're going. We had the passports yesterday. So, you know, it's kind of a nice, it feels like we're giving a good surprise.
That's such a big responsibility on you because if you make a...
Yeah, it slows everything down. Yeah, so that's why we have two people and each one looks at it and, you know, just try to make sure.
So you check each other.
I'm sure the more you do it, the faster you'll be able to.
Except they're all, there's all these strange, we had one the other day that wanted to, they were stationed in Kosovo. And they had a baby, and the baby needed a passport and also needed a diplomatic passport. And we were like, oh, we better get on the phone because we have no idea what this is all about. Turned out to be actually fairly simple, but it's interesting. And, you know, it's nice to talk to mostly people from town as well.
Yeah.
And it's bringing some money, yeah.
And bringing people who might not have otherwise come to the library.
Yeah, so Sharon was gonna put together a little basket of, you know, books from her book sale so that when people bring their children in, they'll have something to do. And then one of the other libraries that does this also will put out, you know, library card applications or information.
Do we have travel books? Do we have like, not forwards, but so maybe that's also...
Yeah.
Not even want to be traveling.
Yeah. Yeah, usually you talk about where you're going. We had a couple of, this week, we had two high school students that, brother and sister, that were going on the AP Euro trip. And so they needed passports. So it's just sort of interesting, like, you know, who we have here, who's coming in. But yeah, that's a good idea to steer them in the direction of, you know, oh, you're going to France.
Yeah. We have books on there.
That's a good idea. But anyway, it's, it's bringing in a lot more money than we thought it would. So now we have to figure out what to do with it.
That's not the problem.
That is not the problem.
So I think at town meeting, when it comes up, we need to request to make a revolving fund for our passport program. Because putting in the gift account's not quite the right way to do it. And also, we have to be paying for the postage as well. So we're kind of making it work for now. But at town meeting, we'll talk to finance and make sure that we're doing it properly. We make forward. So I'm trying to figure it out right now.
I'm surprised the trustees don't donate those passes.
Oh, the reservation? Oh, no, they have a library program, library...
And they charge you full price?
They charge it so that it's, I think we got 50, it's $200. If you get 100, it's, it's 350. So there's a little discount for getting a larger amount. But no, they don't. Most, most museums, we have to pay for, for the passes. And the only one that's free that we offer is the DCR pass for Nantasket Beach. It's like a little hang tag that goes in your...
I didn't know you had that.
Yeah. It's very... All about... Yeah. But only one is... Down sort of deep, right?
Yeah, once people find out about it, you know, it's, it's very popular. But yeah, it could...
How long do you let somebody take? I mean, what is it?
For a day.
For a day?
Those are for a day. And we have two so that if someone didn't return one and someone needed it the next morning, they could take that one. So that works out pretty well. But yeah, it's, it's a great deal. That is right there.
That's amazing.
It's pretty awesome, yeah. Other than that, I think we pay for everything else.
Yeah, I think DCR. Well, the historical society gives us a pass.
They haven't gotten the weapons too.
Yeah.
Anyway.
That one was great.
But other than that...
I had a question on the accounting report. It looked like the endowment balance was $77,949. Is that, is that leftovers from last year?
That's what Linda told me was the number for this year.
It, it's 77,125. It was calculated incorrectly.
Okay, because Barbara had given us a number, which I think was that.
The dollar is actually zero until it's funded. So that's not leftovers from last year.
No, 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 just, yeah.
But I wondered about that because Linda had, had calculated it one way. Barb with counted, calculated it a different way, which made more sense to do.
Because that was from Barbara first. And then I had to reach out to Linda about getting the breakdown of the different funds. And that's when she gave me that larger number. So I used that number.
I'll go back and double check, but I'm, I'm pretty sure it's 77,125.
Okay.
That's what I had in mind minutes.
Okay.
Nice.
That is nice.
Anyway, it's great.
Yeah.
But yeah, I want to know.
I was hoping we had 150. That's why I was asking the question. I thought there were 77 kind of leftovers from prior years.
No, not this last year now.
That's right. We were, we were scraping by to meet our requirements.
Exactly, exactly. So...
Never mind.
Anyway, we don't need to know the final, the real, real number until it gets closer to being spent. But that's great. And that's all I have. I'm listening to his questions. About anything else? Oh, I didn't bring the voting yet, so I guess everyone has to vote first.
Yeah. Most should do approve then.
Second bills.
All right, Brooke Jewell?
Yes.
Carolyn Coffey?
Yes.
Catherine Harvey?
Aye.
Aye.
Elaine Breslow? Sorry. Mary Lou Lauren? Yeah, and Steve Brown.
Yes.
All right. Bills are approved. So that is my turn. I don't really have anything this month for myself except to say that I stopped by the desk to congratulate Michael and tell him that he would be very much missed on my way in. So he's...
He's such a deal.
He is, so he's around. So if anybody wants to do the same on their way out.
Elaine, go.
He's the happiest, warmest guy out there.
I did.
Oh, did you? Oh, that's nice.
Brooke and I had said something on the way in.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah. So anyway, so that's, that is all that I had. So we want to do CLT?
We, we got two bids back on the pavilion. And they were both outrageous, not even in the ballpark. So we have tabled a decision for the time being. And our, Megan was away last week, but we're hoping to get together shortly with Chris and the owner project manager, Michelle, and figure out if there's anything that we could do. The builders encouraged us not to do it and to wait until the spring and try again and see if materials costs come down a little bit.
So that's gonna be my question. Is it somebody itemized?
The pergola wood is gonna be $80,000, just by itself. Now, how is this different from the original estimate? Chris had suggested he thought it would be $400,000. And that was before furniture. And it was with, in my opinion, a light planting budget. So we were always thinking closer to 450. But just for the building part, they came in, one was close to 600 and one was well over 700.
Oh, my God.
So, the good news is, from a fundraising perspective, we're at $430,000. Like, we, we got where we thought we needed to be, including a recently received or recently pledged $25,000 donation from a family fund, a family foundation affiliated with someone in town, which is really special. So, so we're, we, you know, we're not sure where we go from here. Megan has suggested maybe we just do the patio part and not do the amphitheater part, at least to start with. You know, we're, we're just gonna try and put our heads together and think about what our options might be. If you guys have thoughts that you want to share on one to, to either of us. And, you know, we'll just see what Chris has to say. And interestingly enough, the cement, the precast cement blocks were more expensive than a brick, a brick-faced wall. And, you know, it may just be now because materials costs are so much more than labor costs. But it's also, you know, we're, we're paying prevailing wage, you know, all those good things. So we'll just have to see kind of procedurally what we might be allowed to do in terms of breaking up the project. And, you know, can we, can we do small parts and keep it under $400,000 so we can use local guys and not pay prevailing wage, you know? I was gonna ask about that, yeah. So, so we'll just, we'll have to see what we can do. But that's where we are sadly. Are we absolutely prevented right now from using local people? Do you have to do something special? We posted it and, and nobody, like, we didn't... Because they're all so busy. Yeah. That was, then that's the other thing. So, and, you know, we, we may be able to, not, not every local builder is used to checking the municipal website for jobs. So like, what we need to do is tell people, hey buddy, you know, you do such great work for me. Thank you so much. Really, please, look at this. And, and I just, you know, I don't have... Do you need a mason, a landscaper? That's a thing, like, we don't know if, you know, we need a project manager who has a mason and has a landscaper and, and that sort of thing. We can't, we can't break it up, or at least that's how it was. And so what we have to see is whether we can, whether there's anything we can do that's, you know, procedurally correct in a municipal project, but allows us a little more flexibility so that we can get it into a price that we can afford.
How local is local? We're talking about like South Shore or they have to be local, he said?
No.
Oh, but they can be.
They can, you know, you just figure a local person is gonna, like, you know, one of the problems we had with the town hall, people, like, the framers were coming from New Hampshire. Like, of course, they're gonna charge you an arm and a leg, you know? They have to drive down from New Hampshire. Like, cohesive, unfortunately, you know, same problem we've had with staffing, you know? It's, it's off the beaten path, you know? I mean, that's a wonderful thing about it, but it does make it more challenging for hiring.
Yeah.
So that's what's going on there. So good news on the development front, less good news on the construction front. So we're, we'll, we'll hopefully repost in the spring and we're good to get together and figure out what that posting is gonna look like. But sadly, it will drag on.
Well, let's keep at it. Anything else?
Just the approval of the takeout, which we talked about.
Right.
And...
No, otherwise I think we're...
We've got all the funds in an account bearing like 4.5%. So at least we're making a little money, which is nice.
Good, all right, thank you. The Friends have a pretty good report, actually. So the appeal is at 19,555, which is excellent. Last year at this time, it was 16,783. So that's a good jump. So I think that the give butter is really helpful in getting that out. You know, people I think are more aware of it and a little more familiar. So that's really good. I don't know if you saw when we came in, the the raffle that the Friends are doing right now is two big gift bags, the two, you know, tote bags filled with an assortment of things from various local businesses. Meg Wheeler basically pulled the whole thing together. And that is doing really, really well. I cannot recommend highly enough buying Raffle Ticket. I think one is is focused more on kids and I think one is more just, you know, general sort of. So it's library focused, but it also brings in a lot of people from, you know, different vendors or whatever.
How much is the Raffle Ticket?
Five dollars each, but you get, you know, if you buy a lot of them, you can do.
Yeah, like applying discount. And then the ornament I brought too, that they just, I don't know why this is too close, but.
And I think the Raffle Ticket Safari brought in over seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. The last update was like seven hundred dollars. And I think that was only like a week's worth of ticket sales. And it's gonna be on until like the end of December, so.
Is it the first year they've done that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She did some really cool, it's all experience, like cohesive experiences. So like my gem, but also like something about like naming a drink after yourself. Like Seaburger Week or, you know, and just kind of, they're really clever, clever things. She has.
And people talking about that on Facebook. Cohasset one four three. In a good way.
That's her.
Very cute. Things that everybody agrees on, everyone seems to agree on that the best. On Cohasset one four three, yeah. But like, did you guys see that people talking about it? Everyone was very positive.
The raffle. About the the raffle.
Really? Why are you talking about it? Like joking about it. And everyone was like on the same page, happy, like, yeah.
Oh, wow, that's that's like big press.
Making history in here.
On there, everybody knows about it. This is the ornament they had made, which is, you know, the the old one that we had, the hand painted one, you know, of the library was spectacular. I have one, I love it. This is a little more accessible. It's half the price, first of all, it's at twenty two dollars. I think it makes a perfect hostess gift if anybody's going to a party this weekend and they would like to bring something other than flowers or a bottle of wine or a poinsettia. Grab one of these. There's a QR code at the, when you come in and you can get them at the desk. And it came from this woman right across from the post office who has this little shop. She she did them. So anyway, so I, there's some hype on that and I recommend picking up a few of these. So that's basically from the Friends. I think that's everything that I wanted to mention. Let's see. And the the basic books is at almost a thousand dollars already for the year. Well, already, we're almost at the end of the year. But so that's good. They're doing about, you know, two, three hundred dollars.
Those are the books that go in the bins?
In the bins, yeah. So that's that's been huge. I mean, that makes a huge, huge difference to that.
Is that September ten now or January ten?
I think that's, I think that's the.
Wasn't it?
Full, let's see. Oh, no, first quarter, you're right. Yeah, first quarter.
Because I was gonna say, because last year, wasn't it like?
It was like two thousand. Yeah, I guess that's right. Do you, I don't remember what it was for the whole year last year, but.
I remember this kind of check for sixteen hundred, is that what that's was?
For?
For the books, for the bookend.
For that, for what period though?
For the first period.
For the first quarter of of the.
September through, or I guess it was the summer.